State of the wrong, local member of parliament on what actually is the figure that they're saying because either lots of people talk about it, none of them or anything to do with parliament or members of the government. So it might be worth actually just saying for what is the figure. Rather than, because we are in a public meeting and we should make sure that we get the correct figure, which would be a reasonable news by my mind, because we've had lots of people quoting and lots of people do stuff and I've read lots of them for social media. And, and I don't recognise the figure. So I think it'd be worth getting a statement from him, what the intentions is for Buckinghamshire.
I'm going to refer to the meeting we had this afternoon as a formal meeting between us.
So I don't know, I can't confirm or what any figures they were just, there were lots of figures submitted at that meeting today. Can we perhaps try and pin down exactly where we are and take on board their feedback before we go into it?
If someone from the chairman, I'm pretty sure there's lots of figures based around, lots of opinions based around it. People can really know what is the actual figure, then we can discuss whether we agree or not.
I've got the impression this afternoon that we're not going to know the final figure from for perhaps Rob Must and that the figure today was an estimate, as I said, of the ballpark figure. We well quite clearly that they're not yet in a position to confirming the housing needs, so.
And I was also, you know, interested in the statement that they thought they were going to be finished by twenty two, twenty seven. Doesn't, I don't recognise that statement from the conversation before, unless they've, something tragically happened. They were, that's an earlier period of time than was being stated, public meetings before. So that's interesting again, whether that has to do with getting in trouble or not, I don't know. So I mean, I can be careful what we have, we're looking into those facts and then we can decide what we like then.
Well, the speech of that, that will come out over the next twelve months, you know, exactly when, what, where, Lisa.
Thank you. I don't know if it would hurt doing it anyway, because our local MP, it might not get an answer straight away. And I appreciate that the figure isn't set in stone, but you have said it in a recorded meeting, which is live on YouTube, so I don't know how much harm it would cause if we did what was suggested. Like I said, it certainly thought my mind's coming up with an answer, so I don't think it would be more than that.
Uh, did I say it again? Well, again, all I'm saying is that the officers today gave a ballpark figure for what they expected it to be, but they also said, we're not expecting to get a fine figure in twelve months from London Central Government. You know, it's up to members to decide whether they want it to be elected or not. I, it's all very much up in the air, which is what I was breaking out to say when I, when I gave that figure. I think the figure is not released from the central government, I'm not sure the MP's going to have that answer. And I think our consultants, our neighbourhood planning consultants would be unhappy for the defence. But this is all delegated decisions.
Okay.
But we stayed a figure.
It is a hard decision now, isn't it?
That was a captain figure, I think, that Mark.
Yeah, of course.
I guess it depends upon whether the response from the Shire Council to our draft neighbourhood plan is predicated upon their belief of what the likely number of houses are going to be in the Shire, that they think, but yet they know are coming our way. Because if it's going to influence how they respond to our neighbourhood plan, it's really important that we have those figures from the department directly and not, maybe as the Shire Council decided, looking at the ruins, as it were, they think are likely. So I, I see no problem with asking the MP, who thought he would directly to the minister or housing or equipment or whatever, to get the estimate. And if the estimate, as Rex says, we don't know yet, there is no figure to be, to be reported. That in itself is an important thing, but if the Shire Council is saying some figure that they're pulling out of the air and using it to make decisions, that's not wise. And we need to use what we can to get the accurate figure, if there is one, an accurate estimate, rather than one from the Shire Council.
I didn't get wrong. This is not a government figure, but I'll actually read what this says. The local plan for Buckinghamshire will run to around twenty forty five and the current local housing need figure issued by governments is two thousand nine hundred and twenty one pounds per annum. However, the proposed change to this could be to increase by over forty one percent to four thousand one hundred and twenty two houses.
Is from where have they got that figure from?
From the central government, that's what they've been told.
It's citing the Department for Housing and Housing.
I'll certainly go into the report housing need figure issued by government is. That's not Buckinghamshire Council, so we go to the government.
Sorry, I was, I was going, agreeing with John. I think, I think we should, should not be taking figures that have been bandied around as being factual, because there is no figures. You, you just, what you just read out, you said it could be forty percent more. If it could be forty percent more, it could be thirty percent more, it could be twenty percent more. It could be the same as it is, it could be less, there could be in there. And to be making any sort of decisions, having discussions on what is supposition at this stage, I think is a really dangerous thing for us to be doing. And I would, I would agree that we need to ask our elected representative to see if he can find out what the actual factual information is.
I'll second Robin's question.
Steve, Robin wants to make a, make a notice about, yeah, I've asked the latter and paying for him to ask if he can find it. We're going to send it, because we've been told, we've got, they were there for twelve months.
But the answer we give to the chair would be what the answer is, which would be for the Secretary of State. So that would be our own medications and then we can weigh our favours or prejudices on it based upon that information. And it's a good exercise in democracy now. He's got plenty to do.
Lisa, you're seconding it, that's right. So we've, we've clear what it is, that we're just asking for, not clunky, asking our, our, literally, we can't say definitive figures, you can't give us that. What would you, how would you?
We're asking what can be clarity around the statements which has been made to us. That's what we need, clarity around.
On the housing figures, I'm sure that even to our bottom of the box said.
Well, exactly, but to which case I would suggest we ask him, is there clarity about what the figures will be? What the estimation would be around this, as we would like to know.
What the likely impact it will be on Buckingham.
Yeah, it would be helpful to ask perhaps if either where, when we get, where counties will get information from the central government to their housing allocation and us. And if they're currently running, please, going out.
I, I worry, and I'm saying before we go, I worry that what we are in danger of doing is falling into, I don't want to, but there's been a lot of passion put out there indeed about this, but even within two weeks of the statement being made. And I find it strange to think that offices at Buckinghamshire about affirmed of the statement when they were never affirmed of any statement prior to that, or numbers are going to be previous government. So I find it quite strange that they're quoting figures and that's why I think it's reasonable to ask, we can get the answer, there is none. Then we know where we are, don't we? And it's our evidence, because we're only here to consider Buckingham Town Council and we can do the other stuff elsewhere.
Are you happy with that?
I see.
Yeah, well, what's, what's that? Don't, don't know. Thank you, right, so, there's a second, all those in favour? Okay, anyone again? Want to go ahead, the extensions, thank you, that was fair.
Right, this is good.
I can use that, I do, now, so with your real members, we will suspend, tell me all this is for John Doc. So if you'd like to speak about Bernardine's Way.
Yes.
So you, you had one.
About two minutes, yes, that. Yeah, two minutes, sorry, huh, right, okay. Three hours, two minutes. Basically, I'm putting an objection to the proposals from Bernardine's Way and that is published online.
But for what, sorry, what about?
About the HMOs and all of the other things connected with it. Now, I think the county council seems to have got it completely wrong. First of all, Bernardine's Way is a private estate, a private estate, right? And as such, it has, I think, called Bernie, Bernie Close Management Committee, who is responsible for the wellbeing of the residents. Now, because it is a self-governing body, it means then that if, if anything goes against the aims of the committee, Bernie Close, it can be rejected because it's private property and all this thing about HMOs and all the rest of it. I, in my opinion, could be rejected. And crossing my mind that if it's rejected and it goes against the aims of Bernardine's Way residents, then we can call a halt to the, the things that are going on. I, I mean, I spoke specifically of number thirty nine, which is just an example. But the creepy way that the county council has done it is picked on thirty nine, put, put little notice on the lamppost and given a deadline for objection, things to happen. Now, uh, uh, it strikes me that technically we could call a halt to anything that is going on that offends the nature of the community. And the county council has got it completely wrong. Their, their assumptions about the estate are completely at odds with the nature of Bernardine's Way. And I don't like to use the word, but it strikes me as incompetence that these matters haven't been properly looked into.
That's true, Minister, Mr Clarke.
Thank you very much.
Um, there's not, I have to tell you now, there's nothing we can do. We considered this matter at our last meeting, July the fifteenth.
Yes, yeah.
Posted mainly on the grounds of the HMO, parking, et cetera.
I know the town council has.
That's the town council, we shall not now go back on, we, we can't say anymore on that, that's close to us. And that's an amended application coming.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've, I've got your notice here, that it's ticked box, that, that basically the town council has agreed that all is not right.
Yeah.
So I, I, I've no dispute with that, but it's, it's, the problem is with the county council.
That's something you, you and your fellow residents need to take up with Buckinghamshire Council.
Yes, and.
We've done our bit as a consultant.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I.
Hopefully, we've supported you residents.
Yeah, yes, 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 yeah, yeah, so, anyway. At, at the, the bottom of it, I, I, I think we should enforce the, the changes that are going on.
Yeah, for that, okay, that's a matter between you.
Me and the county council, yes.
Shire Council.
Yeah, yeah.
We've done our bit, couple of our members would like to ask you something, please, sir.
Thank you. I notice the chairman said that the, that it's passed for us to consult on it. But when you said that you've got a, a management committee set up for the residents, you mean a residents' association? So it's self-governing, you call your own meetings. Because if somebody's put in that petition, I'm surprised that you have powers as a residents' association or management committee that you can stop any development. But that was all on.
Well, the, the powers are, that, 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 it is self-governing and in the, in the, the sort of the, the, the lines of its powers is to, to look after the residents. And it's private, it's private property.
Absolutely.
Private property, so we, you know, we can sort of do what we like, along with, along with.
As the part, I would strongly recommend that we get to listen to, act on this with the dark council, because it sounds like it's going to be a lot of legalities involved.
Yeah, yes, yes.
But that's all we can really suggest, and we've done our bit. And unless an amended application comes back, we can't comment on it any further.
Yeah, yes.
The amended application comes back, then yes, please come on.
Yeah, yes. Do it that way, yes.
Yeah, Patrick, sorry.
I'd like to find a comment on the town council's decision. What I can say is, if you write to me, I would like to get clarity to Buckinghamshire Council's position on the decision, what they're likely to take or have taken. What I can't do is change narrative.
What do you mean by the narrative, what?
When I say the narrative, the narrative is that this, I'm not going to discuss the application, you're right to me with your concerns.
Yes.
I would use that to discuss the application, not to debate it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't want to compromise or discuss the action to the town council. But I'm very happy if you write to me as a Buckinghamshire, laying out what your prognosis of the situation is.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I can find one in a minute, but you can't. But I can, I can follow that, what I can't do is guarantee that it will, will ease your, your mind, but at least it will be something that you can say as, as rest to you. And I'll have to wait for that response to play.
So, so, I'm assuming.
My name is Robin.
Robin, are you, are you, are you one of the ones up on the BCC committee?
Yeah, I am, I'm a Buckinghamshire councillor, I'm not going to.
Is it Robin with a Y or with an I?
Mr Clarke, thank you very much for that. I'm sorry we can't help the brother tonight, we are here to residents.
Yeah, yeah.
Shame in a way, we can't see us in July, but as you say, if an amended application comes back,
Yes.
then we will be really, really concerned.
Yes, my objection in quite a lot of detail is set out on the internet.
Yeah, well, the, the pass under your bill, will you then?
Yeah, yeah. I want to see through, thank you.
Okay.
And Ali, Dan?
So if we can resume standing orders, thank everybody, we can start going up on planning applications. Tonight we have eight, five, plus three. So the first of all is eighty nine at Barnaby Place, householder application for a single storey rear two-storey side extension. This would increase, we probably could add, increase the property to four bedrooms, there is room for three cars. Neighbours were made aware of the application, there's been no comment on that, on the on the application, anyone have any comments on it, Buckingham society, Roger?
No objection.
Then that case, I propose we have no objection, seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? That's everybody except Morgan, we're up here. Number two is sixteen Meadow Gardens, householder application for a single storey side and rear extensions with a front porch extension, again, notices were taken good time, eighteenth of July. And the neighbours will be aware of this, there's no objections raised there. There's anyone new comments, again, Buckingham society. In that case, I propose no objections, seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everybody bar Robin. I can see, these two applications may be considered together, it's the White Hart Hotel. Straight application, there's a building application, members will be aware that work has started already on the repainting of the front of White Hart. One thing we've noticed, there is external illumination proposed for the third floor. We are in the conservation area, I reckon you're raising objections, but I know the Buckingham society does have something to.
Yeah, our, our major concern, our only concern really is the, the colour of the portico, because it just, it's very, it appears very dark on the, on the plans. So we're a bit worried that there's a white heart sits on the top, which is damaged. So we just think that if you paint it a really dark colour, it's going to change the character of the building and the white heart on the top, but as the chairman has said, if the house project building, as I said, doesn't object, then there's not really much you can do, that's our only concern on, on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My, my only concern is what the eight floodlights, whether they're going to be light solution and then pinch on the houses or flats around White Hart. Eight times floodlights.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of floodlights, like a football pitch.
Eleven fixed on the front elevation to a ground reference for windows.
Anyone else, any comments? Right, I'm going to propose that we reject this application on the grounds of just heard the colour, which is not appropriate for the conservation area, and also the I'm trying to stop it. And so as Andy outlined, the floodlights, certainly related floodlights, and if we could note, the city has not been presented us as a retrospective application, even though the scaffolding's been up for over a month and you'd have seen Catherine's pictures are taken on the tenth of August. That's my proposal, secondly, Anthony? We'll get a second, and then we can ask Martin.
Okay, I'll second.
You'll second that, Martin?
I was just going to correct you, I don't believe they're up lights, they are floodlights down.
The down lights, okay, I, I.
If, if, if on you, definitely.
Yeah, everyone can get to down lights, it's in the same, same means, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favour of objection? One, two, John?
So can we, can we make sure that we're, we're rejecting all this external lighting that they're proposing to put all the way around and, and not just the.
At the back as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're, that, that can increase that all, all lighting around, yes, and that's everybody except Robin.
Thank you.
With lanterns on each side, the floodlights fixed on the porch.
Just a quick comment about all the lighting, has there been a comment by the environmental health officer? Just normally they would.
Anyone a source of objections?
No, it's not the objections, it's.
Oh, it's pathways, is it?
I can hear any objections about the coastside round the back of the car park. Though the immunity boards apparently are too low down, people won't go into them.
I have noticed that the heritage have no objections on the fourteen, the fourteen.
On your morning.
Okay, my mistake, right, it was. Didn't I raise that, we found it's her. Well, I can't, I can't anyway now say.
Yes, but I mean, I would have a coffee. There is a design and heritage statement.
Item five, number four London Road, uh, removal of condition four. Starting in, item five, number four London Road, removal of condition four to the HMO. Seven, seven bedroom HMO, right condition, have been given for this, is a house in multiple occupation. Uh, hereby permitted shall be occupied solely by students. Reason for that condition, put on by the local planning authority, is to attract the basis upon which the application has been submitted and assessed. To call the aims of policy H P two, Buckingham Labour Book Plan. Um, the agent has asked for this condition to be changed and amended to. Uh, allow both students and professionals. Um, the reason he's given is that policy H P two at Buckingham Labour Book Plan. Um, was the condition, was the reason this condition was given, but this plan is currently under public consultation. And so no longer counts, and H P two no longer has a requirement for students. He said that the, the new plan doesn't either. Um, he's wrong on both counts because the current labour plan still carries full weight until twenty. Uh, thirty, and the new plan that we're. Uh, currently under consultation continues with that H P two clause about requirements to bring students, so. People leave property can still there for the student accommodation, um, without a strict requirement being let to students alone.
Oh, don't put it in your application then, hey?
So, um, Roger, Buckingham society?
Yeah, we're doing a bit of a quandary about this because. Um. I think we, we don't see how that condition can be enforced. Because who's policing it? And. In a way, a house of multiple occupation is the same, really, whoever occupies it. But having said that. Really support the town council, if you want to add some of that as a policy.
Thank you. And the reason for students to obviously reduce the amount of lighting marking. That, that, that was the main reason target.
Yeah, that is also, yeah, as I say. Unless, unless there's something illegal, then how do you enforce that condition? It's very, it's really good to do unless there's a legal agreement that whoever lets the policy knows.
John?
Well, I mean, the county will know if it's been broken because people start having to pay council tax. Students don't pay council tax, whereas other people do it. So if they suddenly find out that somebody is a financial tax, people say must do that. They'll immediately know that the condition has been broken. I'm assuming whether they do that joining up, of course, is another matter, but the joining up still is feasible.
My advice has been that if one person has to pay council tax in the house, the whole property has to pay. So therefore it has to be divided amongst all the occupants or not. Lisa?
Thank you. Um, I recall when my eldest was looking for um a room. That one of the estate agents wouldn't show him any properties that was advertised for students. That they just refused point blank. So I don't know whether it's something that the estate agents themselves. Um, the agreement of the, the homeowner and puts into place, but I do think, you know, that happened. Number of years ago, so.
Hmm, what's interesting here is when, when they made this original application, it was just students, they didn't know the variation by the government. The provision.
You took words right out of my mouth. I mean, they applied for this HMO in the student variant.
Yeah.
Um, so therefore that's what it is.
Yeah.
Um, and all the conditions that go along with that, enforced by H M O officers, whoever. Um, it is what it is. We discussed that together with parking and the arrangements thereof, the whole unit. Under a student umbrella.
Yeah.
And no, it stays as it. I have none of this creepage, thank you.
John, did you want to add something?
Yeah, my hunch is he's even charged higher rates to people who are not students. Um, and that's why he's looking into, because there's sort of a mark, students have enough accommodation in the town. So it's not that he can't bet it, presumably wants to bet it at higher rates, I'm guessing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Definitely receive the application. Be right with that, but lowered the rent.
Lowered?
Be lowered the rent, so he's obviously not certain.
Sorry, say that again.
Well, if you only lower the rent if you can't get taken.
Interesting.
Thank you also. Um, if the person that's getting a room is on benefits, there's a cap, isn't there? So they can't um apply for a higher rent, it's like five hundred pounds or something a month. That the benefits department will pay up to. So I wonder whether they can be of the fee of the room or whatever, because the benefits won't pay any of that.
That's speculation, isn't it?
Sorry, it's, it's the um, um, local um housing. Um. Local housing, something rather, I can't remember quite what it's called. Um, and there's, there's um. Sometimes referred to as a bedroom tax, um, because um if you are. Um, assessed that you are in need of one bedroom, that's, that's all that you will get for your housing benefit. The, the local area, um. Um, allocation, whatever, I can't think of the precise word of it. Um, will only pay, and I think it's six hundred and fifty pounds for one, one for a single person. Um, at the moment, um, which is, I think, um, in line with what, um. Social wage rents are, rather than private ones.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right, in that case, I propose that we oppose the application to remove the condition on the grounds. Policy H P two at Buckingham Labour Book Plan is still current, carries full weight. And that um is also incorrect in his assertion that the new plan, um. Will no longer have a requirement for with the students, H P two will continue to thunder that. Second, but Anthony, all those in favour?
Always up for a little education.
Right. Um, we move on to Robin Close. Yeah, this is Robin Close on the Badgers Estate, household application for a single story front extension. Um, it's quite neat that they designed this house, it's got, as Catherine's pointed out, a Norman. Uh, front windows. Um, it's going to make the house look quite tall, but there's no reason. That it shouldn't go ahead with it unless anyone has a valid objection, i.e. the Buckingham society. Buckingham society's happy with it, all for this one. Anyone else? No, in that case, I propose we have no objection. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? So, run it except Robin, thanks again. Um. Number seven is thirty Chambles Road, household application for first floor side, single story front and rear extensions. It's going to come four bedrooms, there will need to be room for three cars. Recommandate that they are proposing to make. And then the parking through the wall, you can see in the epic in its photograph. Um, they would of course need to drop curb eventually, so presume that application come back. Um, so this is at the end of the long run of Victorian houses, um. It's pointed out, numbers one to twenty-three, has a long garden going down to the park boundary in the back, they want a deck. Uh, which sets down to the lawn. It's, the very bottom of the property is in the. Yeah, flood plan, flood zone two. But that this development could have no effect on that. Any comments, Roger?
No, nothing.
Anyone else? In that case, I propose no objections. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everyone except. Robin. Um, amended plans, this is number seven of the halt. Also the application for demolition of existing conservatory. And garage storage building, an erection of single story side and rear extension. Um, there was one objection to this from, uh. How the homeowner of the nine in the hole next door, she originally, uh. She was concerned about the flooding, but Roger, who's also in Robin Place, pointed out that's a one off advantage. So we don't need to take that into account, but what we do need to take into account is our concern. That the two windows on the side of what looks like a garage. Are not, it's not in fact a garage, it's a utility room and a kitchen, and the kitchen has to be considered as a habitable room. Therefore, she's claiming that this wall would take away the natural light. Um, it's very, very close, she says, evidently the extension. That my number nine, which has been in place for over twenty years, beats two windows, not skywides and the side elevation. One of these is my kitchen, the proposed terms to construct a solid brick wall directly in front of both windows, effectively blocking them. So, not good. So what the members say about this? Roger, do you find an interest in this or?
Um, yes and no.
You've got to vote, I know, but I just wanted to hear.
I'll just, uh. I'll just, I'll give it to them.
In that case, it can.
Forty plus months ago, we had no objection.
No objection. Fran?
Um. It looks like they're trying to mirror basically what's already been built. Um, next door, so it seems, yes, it's very close, but it looks like they've, they've built right up to their boundaries, isn't it? Um.
It doesn't quite match it. She doesn't want to go complaints of the closed side extension on the number seven, doesn't match that to number nine. Obviously because it's got a window and it's higher.
But as, as a, as a, um. As a, as a, um, floor plan. Um, thing, it, it's pretty much doing the same as set on next door, isn't it? Um, which.
What's the problem is that?
The fact, the fact that, that she's been, she's, yeah, but she's been, she's been allowed it. And had to have windows which are so close to the other party's boundary. Which I don't know if that's, that would be normally be something that, that.
Windows under the eight.
Yeah, they are very high up, aren't they?
And so.
I can't imagine that she gets that much light through them.
No, the windows in number nine are light, that big, two of them, and they're clustered. Could we, or is Catherine?
I have made notes in my notes that I found the planning application for her extension.
Okay.
And then twenty years old, it's beyond enforcement anyway. So I, I, I looked so that I could see how the, what she'd actually done with the extension. And whether it was a store of an utility, was a facility on the kitchen, or whether it was a utility. And the, I couldn't find any record.
Interesting.
John?
Well, looking at the picture on page twenty, it suggests that number nine has a garage there. Um, that's what the garage door looks like.
Yes.
But we're being told to behind that garage door. Maybe it was built as a garage, has now been converted into a utility room and some part of.
Yeah.
Kitchen.
Yeah.
So I'm going with Fran on this. Um, if the household on the. At number seven, wants to build the equivalent, um, more of that nearest area. Extension, I don't see a reason why they shouldn't be able to do that. But I, I don't think it would be fair to refute one.
Hmm.
On the basis that that's comparable to the other.
It's a precedent, isn't it?
It's, I, I, you know, because they had built right out of their boundary.
Hmm.
It would be, it's any reason why the office in number seven shouldn't be allowed to do this.
Martin?
Uh, I think what the other councillors have said, but unfortunately, in my view. That is time gone by under different rulings. And I think now you do have a right to light irrespective of how those windows appeared, whether they were officially approved. Or they've now approved due to extended time scales. So they are there and they are allowed to be there now irrespective of how they got them. And if they are then using the windows, then uh the right to light. So that somebody can't build right up to it, um, I would. Um, continue to argue really. And I'm worried about building it right up to the uh. Um, boundary. Again, the other one is, but, um, or close to it. But, um, things have moved on now, and we like a bit of space between uh boundaries. So maintenance and other things can take place.
That's eloquent, of course, yeah.
So again, I'm, um, against that, uh, that side elevation. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I'm just going to give the map, the other side of the page on page twenty. It would appear that the door was so down. There's two extensions there, therefore it's buttered on to each other. Uh, what would be number eleven and number thirteen seem to have. Um, I'm just going to look on street view to see whether we can see what's happening today. And I would, I'd be surprised if those two, you know, if this was built as a garage, putting the window inside. Just to give it out of the light type garage would make sense. Is there no window at the end of the garage overlooking the garden? Because that would mean there's still light coming in and they're blocking that light, or you shouldn't have the clearance. It's an odd circumstance. Very possible, but that small little window like that ain't going to be right that much light anyway, is it? I mean, it really isn't.
Right, anyone else? No, Mike, Roger?
Let's make a comment. Um. The extension of number nine was permitted development at the time. Apparently, the only reason this needs permission is because it's a wraparound. So if it was, if their extension reflected number nine exactly, then it would be permitted development. So because they're going back and then facing the conservatory, so it sort of wraps around that now leaves permanent issue. So number, number nine's extension was. At the time.
Still needs to have the grounds I can look at to see what's yet.
Well, I'm, I'm going to be by proposing that we. Oppose this application on the grounds of the side extension will be depriving. Um, the kitchen window of natural light. It will probably be a policy being A H three about which aims to protect residential amenities. There is something, Anthony?
Yeah.
Seconded by Anthony. Um, John, you have another one?
Yeah, just looking on street view here, every other property in that, in that close, they've got two guarantees side by side. As far as I can see.
Yeah.
Um, and, all right, not everywhere, but the, the ones near the property that we're looking at. I've got two guarantees side by side. If someone chooses to turn their garage into a utility room. Well, that's their choice, I'm certain, you know, to this, certainly, but then denies someone the opportunity to. To, to their own property, what they've done to themselves, just, just, just doesn't seem right, doesn't seem right. Anyway, I don't think it's fair.
Well.
Thank you. Um, I also think we've got to be careful of one way saying about windows, as Roger's explained. We're not talking about windows, but strip, like window, like letterbox type windows. So we're not, we're not talking about being able to look out of your window and see a view and get sunlight through. If it's like just a letterbox type window.
And it's right up.
And it's there that's all we've got to remember anyway. And we've got to be careful when they say windows, because yeah, if it's made of brass, but. I think when we talk about that, we're, we actually mean a window in a house, like a front room, kitchen. And this is not.
I mean, there is party mall act considerations here. And obviously that would have to be gone through, but was there even an extension? Probably if it was built before the party hall. I don't know. I'm a query.
Um, you can decide in the vote, we have proposed in the second, all those in favour of opposing this on those grounds?
Opposing.
Opposing, yeah.
No, no, sorry, I, yeah.
No, no, sorry, I, yeah.
So, that's four, that's one, two, three, four, yeah, those are yes. Three are yes, so that's correct. Thank you, that's good help. Sorry to be rude, I just like the obstinate. Roger, thank you for your answer.
Hmm.
Pleasure.
Yeah.
Um, number nine, lastly, housing applications, eleven at Davis Street, on both fields. We've had this before, this is a household application for installation of an S O S. Heat pump in the back garden, they've turned it through ninety degrees, they've also had their own noise surveys done. Um, but last time, we said we have no objections subject to economic, sorry, environmental health officers. Report or comments, and they are still unknown from the environmental health officer, so. That's what you're saying, not with France.
I think it's odd that they've turned it ninety degrees, that it's now up against the boundary fence, rather than being against their, their um. Their property, I don't, I, I would have thought that that would have caused more um issues for the neighbour.
Yeah.
Um. When they thought um it would be um more likely to have objections. But I still don't understand what to put in an S O C heat pump, um. I've not seen, seen anybody else have to, have to, um, they're going in all over the place.
Um, the Latin had brand permission, reported, made a.
They're obviously bigger ones.
Yeah, they're scores.
Roger?
It's because it's within a certain distance of the boundary.
And they put it, they put it even better.
Is it on the other side of the head?
Maybe, maybe they decided it's, it's less of a, an issue for them if it's, if it's there in the corner rather than being um flat on the back wall of the hand.
Martin?
Yes, heat pumps, I would suggest that um. Three hundred millimetres of foot is too close for a heat pump to operate efficiently. Um, and I'm assuming that the fan is on the uh property owner's side of that. Uh, heat pump and not on the fence side. Um, thereby, it will be forcing air into the heat pump and onto the fence.
Yeah.
And three hundred millimetres, I don't believe it was enough to disperse the uh airflow through it. Um, stop any issues with the fence, and also because of the, what's the word, in airflow, uh turbulence. It will create more noise being that close, it needs to be six hundred minimum in the way that the air flows. So in that case, I am going to object to this particular one, not against the principle, but just against the location. In, in this reverted way.
Any other comments?
Okay, so I'm going to both to object to it on the grounds Martin's just laid out, that we, we believe it's too close to the fence. Um, and also, we, we're still waiting for comments from the environmental health officer.
Yeah.
Post the second, you're fine, to me, all those in favour? That's everybody, except for me, thank you very much. Um, not a consultation to breathe, we've had three circulated by email, one about some people support church. I caused quite a lot of uh discussion because some of the planning committee members went aware that environment had dealt with this and. Had asked these truths, we were moved, but um, we do defer to the environment committee's. Decision on this, also, um, take note of our officers, particularly me with his comments and um. Problems that could be caused with insurance companies, if church foundations should be damaged by these, so um. We, we, at that point, we can't object to the fact.
Can I just say that it wasn't a decision that was taken lightly, um, at all, it was, it was very well discussed in, in our, um. In our confidential um agenda and um, then we. Um, made the recommendation that we look for other places to um. Put and plant more trees in order to um.
Yeah, these, we indicated that people would be planted on the other side of the church and away, but thank you very much for your, your work on that in the environment committee. Um, and the other two matters report now, um, land seventy three Morton Road, that's the development from W Y D. Road that's gonna go up on, on Morton Road, again, we've been pushing, the entrance should have been from Weston Avenue. Which have been flat, would have avoided all this, but we all know where we are, so. That has to be, and the other one is, it makes more now, we have a three, three this autumn. We'll be dealing with, thank you for that, planning, planning decisions, um. All those that we have no objections to, what's proved, we've supported the United City Tindrick Road and Duskell State. Um, application in principle, but we did point out the parking bays were not to the new standard. Um, the amended travel plan was submitted after our comments, although it didn't come back across the consultation. With parking bays of required dimensions, and the highways officer expressed themselves satisfied with that and the related changes. The other thing we pointed out, there'd been no bus service along Tindrick Road for many years, uh but we were told that expenses connected to travel plan. Were the only section one O six requirements that didn't cover reinstating buses and anything like that. So that's a small victory for us there, getting the bigger parking spaces. Uh, refused applications, twelve Bridge Street, the addresses, external stair and new door, the class plan being refused. Um, we have no objections, although we said we'd like to have seen more detail of the staircase that can be visible. In the street scene, in the conservation area and on a principal entrance to town. Um, the planning officer refused it on the grounds it was an inappropriate development and would harm the character and the parent, parents of the area. In conflict with B E two of the bulk.
Right.
So, um, we presume they will come back with something more acceptable for the conservation.
Yeah.
Um, withdrawn White House farm renovations and repairs to former dairy, and they have awful lot of work up there with the new owners and like. Presumably, at this moment, it's, it's just taking on too much and they'll come back when they're ready to do it, I would assume. Um, six to planning expect, an appeal has been lodged against the refusal of the commission for the old telephone exchange. Remember, we put in a very lengthy um. Object to this, with. That was. Refuse on the court of December, and the appeal was lodged on the thirtieth of May, four days before it ran out, so. Um, officers are set, the reason for refusing it, officers are set the appropriate proposal, considered the applicant. Have not been provided a paper of evidence to demonstrate the site has been marked up for two years for seeking for use at an appropriate price. It fails to comply with policy E two of the bank, the proposal also fails to comply with policy E E two of the Buckingham. Labour Development Plan, insofar as the proposal seeks to change the whole of the building to residential use. And a major heavy retail or mixed use, the sign of the extension would not simply be related to the existing building and nearby buildings. And no attempt to be made to soften, soften the setting. And whilst the council, according to this, while the council cannot currently demonstrate five year housing plan supply for the name of Elsbury. In this instance, given the harm arising to designated heritage assets, the tilted balance is disengaged. Yeah, first time we've come across that. So, um, before us is, just if we want to add anything to all our submissions, the biggest submitted change. Was that after the meeting, we considered this, Royal Malc, that Royal Malc Group, and they were absolutely clear. Um, with their objection that the impact of the power development on the existing Royal Malc group delivery office will be significant and unacceptable.
Yeah.
Um, which is, we could largely put their faces forward.
Yeah.
This time we made our objection. Um, interesting, they are to refuse of being given comments, still coming in from A and B, water and fire rescue. But anyway. I don't know if anything, anyone would like to add to that. So we just, please, yeah, it's gonna be doggy, isn't it, I, it's written.
I just, well, our, our response will go with the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we don't need to.
So it's best.
Just as an aside, I was talking to somebody who um works for Royal Malc Group. Um, who um happens to be the mayor of Northampton at the moment, um. And um he was um making comments of um how difficult the um access illegris from um from. From there, and how often the um delivery vehicles actually hit Clansbury's shop. Um, going in and out of there, um, so I think, I think there's, yeah, there's, there's definitely. No room for having traffic backwards and forwards on a regular basis on that. Yeah, absolutely, the security, the security on it is, is, you, you've got to have security for Royal Malc.
The noise comes coming out, it's going to pop on, it's going to be flanking and everything and uh. Make, make it very difficult, anyway, so then there's the happy book, let, let that one go through. Um, right, we're doing well tonight, um consultations, two consultations we have, we've seen both of these. The part of the Milton Keynes City Plan twenty fifty, um, I replied, and John. Thank you, John, backed up what I said to Catherine, um, the favourite is the plan covers not only central Milton Keynes. Other towns in the authority, including Newport, Paddle, Old Nick, Stone, Bradford, Woburn Sands, the bus button, Sheriff and a. Line in Stoke-on-Trent, decent long road, up to Beach Hampton. Um, central Milton Keynes had a population of two hundred and ninety thousand, that's twenty twenty on the census. And the plan will take that up to four hundred and ten thousand by twenty fifty. It's an affordable housing content of as much as forty percent. And of course, um, under N P G F proposals, if it's on any development on a green belt site. Would have to have them in a fifty percent, but, but this is where we are at the moment, and of course, this is well. Going through all those consultations now, um. Development area, Shelly Downs in Warden is the only one that really affects us, it's on our side of Milton Keynes. Um, this is the westmost town in the area, which is supporting the thousand new homes. It notes under policy G S eleven A that when the development comes forward for an area on the edge of Milton Keynes. Which is wholly or partly within the administrative boundary of a neighbouring authority, i.e. Buckinghamshire Council. Will put forth the following, the design of development should reflect its context as well as the character of the city. Uh, my point on that is, it's effectively a green belt rural village site, why should it reflect the character of an urban city? And probably read me on that, traffic impacts on the road network within the city and nearby town districts centers and rural areas should be robustly assessed. And I think my improvements, my reply to that was, this is the very least, of course, that upgrading to your territory. A forty one from Milton Keynes, past Buckingham, the Tindrick bypass, and then. Policy G S nineteen, which is particularly about Shelly Downs, calls for infrastructure and traffic management, measures to mitigate impacts. On the wider highway network, again, this should be looking at improving the A forty one. There's also, as Catherine pointed out, the need for a railway station at Salt and Chase. Let's see, the eighteen hundred home development improved on twenty twenty one on the east west railway. And then finally, education, as Catherine asks, how many pupils are educated outside Milton Keynes City? We're obviously aware, Milton Keynes people detaining the Royal Latin and elsewhere within Bucks, um.
Um, just a question about the, um. You say it's effectively a green belt overall village site, is it actually designated as green belt? I didn't think so, so I think using the term green belt in that is possibly being, putting a bit of a contentious um. Slant on things.
That's why I said, is it?
Yeah, but I thought just actually using the, the term green belt, or green, green. But, but it's not effectively, because the green belt is, is a, is a, um, an area which is legally set aside. As being green belt, um, you can't effectively have a green belt, you can have a green belt, or you can not have a green belt. They can't effectively be a green belt.
Okay, if John's happy, I'll take it.
I just, I just think that especially, especially with the, the, some of the um social media that's going on at the moment with, with them.
Fran, if it is a rural village site, you happy with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else got any comment?
Bob, next one. On the. Salt, um, Shelly area, which was trained on the. N K size, south side of it, we always know that Buckinghamshire side is charged that area. It, um, they've developed, I was up there not long ago, they've developed maybe thirty metres of the. Um, borough of Milton Keynes. So. It's almost that this principle of. Being booked to one or the other, they think it's gonna be a pure walk in one, you're.
This is Salt and Chase.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm not sure. How we do that, and the comments about. Thing that always impresses you to walk around Milton Keynes, especially the new, uh, to Milton Keynes, how much space they've got. How much they're laid out, how well they're laid out, how they put the infrastructure in third, how they actually um put green spaces in, how you like it. Yeah, yeah, but they're glum, aren't they, you know, how they actually plan them out for habitation on turn. So, so I find it difficult to say. Where, maybe that's something to say that we're. And to say that, you know, that's a negative what they do, honestly, carry on like that, they'll create much more sustainable communities and people be happy. Um, of course, we don't know how long that lasts, but if it carries on like that, um. Don't, not sure where we go with that comment, it's um.
Well, Salt and Chase, we, we have no encosts in at the moment, under this, this is the N K City Plan, which is.
Yeah.
Specifically, it's about Chandy Downs on, on Arsenal, for us.
But all the development may take in Milton Keynes, would be a portion of the numbers which would go elsewhere in the. Arc or way, modern terms would have been even, with a banana and arc, a development ring, I don't know what the modern term is gonna be, it would be something similar. So the development may take there, will take the pressure off, um, rural villages and stuff, so saving yourself the numbers across the southeast.
Apart from Buckinghamshire, Mr. Teck said quite clearly.
Well, I'm worried what Mr. Teck says, he's on, on a mission, um, um, at the moment, which it's, um. It's far sidetracked indoors, I mean, if you want to take what Mr. Teck said, every time, I won't repeat it here. But, um, it is on the webcast, um, so I think that, you know, we are where we are, jetty is different, and we don't know where it's gonna go, so.
So we're asking tonight, just if anyone's got any comments to add, Catherine, and then we go back to the consultation, which closes. Done to ask, thanks, that's the plan. John?
Yeah, I'm just wondering the railway link and circle, I mean, Salt and Chase is not that far from Blackshley. But Blackshley, of course, is embedded in a lot of housing and everything else, and I'm just wondering if there would be some argument to say. That you could put a station near Salt and Chase and some of these developments. That would be not only a station that can be used for community consulting, so it also be used as a park and ride. This book in case there's no park and ride.
Yeah, in the document, there's quite a lot about that.
But they could have a park and ride using railway, not if you're buses.
Probably particularly at Blackshley, which is in the centre of Milton Keynes.
No, there's scope, maybe at some point, so let's be a, well, Blackshley, this, this, it's not the end point of East West Railway. And, you know, the end point will be eventually Bedford and making it on from there to, to Cambridge, you know.
Yeah.
Is that maybe there's scope to consider some sort of, um. Well, I don't know, a way in which the, 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 well, the railway could.
We're taking note of that, John, okay.
It's a thought, it's a thought, great point. We talked a little earlier on about everyone speaking, we've got to get the cars into public transport, doesn't it just be buses? It can also be trains as well, I mean, Oxford has that now with the, with the, with the parkway. Um, station on the edge of Oxford, why shouldn't there be one on the edge of Milton Keynes?
Hmm.
Okay.
One of the things that we, Catherine's point about education is key in terms of. And on to let you go to education, but I don't believe that's going to be the only challenge with education, because. Um. Development coming quite closely to the, um, parents will choose to go to their nearest. school period. So I don't know how we elaborate on that, because they need, the problem is that the development on Buckinghamshire did make a contribution to Milton Keynes, they're concerned about that. But children coming into Milton Keynes, like we're concerned about in, meaning to hear. It could be that they might want to turn down to home schools in Buckinghamshire as well. Because, you know, what it is. So I don't know whether we ought to just say both ways with that because there is concerns that people were drifting Milton Keynes as well, drifted to Buckinghamshire to get away from virgins. We've seen it where children are going to, historically going to Northamptonshire to go to. We've seen it with children going to Brackley, Brackley. So I think it needs to be both ways considered because it is something that needs to be considered because it also turned back to John's point, which was made earlier and Fran's, is about the environmental impact that people do in their journeys. And whether we should be moving back towards Catherine areas. And there's a way of managing that because with Catherine areas, at least the children in those areas know where they can go to school. And at the moment, we've got vehicles running all over Buckinghamshire chasing an exam, which has got no guarantee on it because anybody's had children, you can't guarantee they'll attend a class and you can't guarantee they'll listen when they're there. And you hope they will, but you're not there as a parent, are you? You know what I mean?
So if anyone's, everyone's happy about, that's the response we can make as a town council. You can still, of course, apply individually in our machine. Catherine's talking about, thank you very much. We can move on then to the other consultation, seven, two Ministry of Housing, Community and Local Government, as it's now called, leveling up school, you would have noticed. And this is the updating of the national planning policy framework. It's a very complex document. There's a hundred and two questions on the main thing. And after discussing it with Steve and Tom Clark and with Catherine, we decided we as members were not qualified enough to answer the majority of the questions. So the recommendation to point tonight is that members delegate to officers led by Steve to respond to the national planning policy framework consultations in accordance with any advice perceived from our neighbourhood plan consultants, and they are no less taking, only without comments made by members I started the whole rolling by saying, the main thing it's moving over is all these divestations of private housing land supply which was suspended in December twenty twenty three. Although the new green belt policies might have a political impact here on us here in North Park, as Fran has pointed out at the moment. There's also the possibility of SIL being dropped. And what happens if the Sheriff Council fails to produce its local within the government deadline? Nowhere in the document is any mention whatsoever of the loss of agricultural land. I suppose the big question for us would be how this affects our draft, maybe the plan, one which we've been writing for eighteen months now. Noting that the government wants to enact the N P T F to do from the end of this year. They have made some concessions that it got as far as regulation sixteen, we're talking at the moment, but the where you are will stand. They won't interfere with that. Members, any thinking whatsoever?
There isn't any statement that SIL is going to go because they'd have to come up with a whole new way of collecting development contributions. So I don't think we can assume that. That's another item which is out there, which hasn't got any facts behind it. They've even got to go back and find out, they've got to write a whole new legislation around letting the government contributions and developments. So I can't imagine that SIL will go. What I think with the green belt, I'd be accurate with that, it's called green belt, grey belt. And what I'm trying to say, what I believe to be true is the grey belt is areas of land which sit within a green belt area, which has been developed previously. This means if there was a school on it, a factory on it, a house on it, a farm on it, or any other sort of development based on that land, historically or within its memory, it can be proven, that then becomes grey belt. The idea that green is out against grey belt. So what we have to be very careful about living in Buckinghamshire is we have a green belt and how green belt in Buckinghamshire. And every house that is built in South Buckinghamshire will be built here. What I do know, attended meetings that were stated in that, eighty eight percent of all the data was going to come towards us anyway. Whatever the greater number is, it isn't coming here. So I think we have to say, seek a definition of a grey belt. What grey belt actually means. Because I think that's what it's going to say. But now I'm only saying what I've heard. I'm not, I can't, I can't back that up. But I think when I did, I heard the minister say that. So it might be more.
What's, what you're saying is the difference between grey belt and brownfield.
No, no, you said the green belt.
No, no, I asked you what.
Brown, brownfield is sites which have nothing to do with green belt. But it's, it's sites that have been previously used as factories or whatever else. Grey belt is a new term that's, that's just been coined, which is referring to, as Robin stated, sites that have previously been developed but are now redundant, which lie within the green belt area.
I also saw another definition that said it was very low grade agricultural land.
Yeah, that there's previously developed land. And within the green belt, the metropolitan around London, there's a considerable amount of disused airfields. Which every person could tie up these. But that is technically brownfield land as well. So calling something grey belt is a bit, what does it mean? I don't think anybody really knows. Because if you look at, my own view is that they, they're probably talking about, for instance, if you drive around the N twenty five, around some parts of West London, there's a lot of derelict land that hasn't been previously developed, that is scrub land or has been affected by motorbike instruction, H S two, stuff like that, that you think is just contributing to the green belt. Not really. And I think that's the way they're looking at it. And I often sort of think to myself, has green belt actually worked? As I was looking at Google, somebody was asking me about a site in Hedgerun, South Bucks. If you look at the Google map, you've got all these little villages. But they're all almost joined up. We've got Beckingsfield, Wycombe, early down to Marlow. So although that is covered by green belt, it's, they are, since like nineteen forty seven, they have actually crept slightly towards each other. So it's, I think it's green belt obviously was a very good idea because it was there to stop river development while raising all rates. But I, I don't think we should treat it as a separate thing. I think it's more important to protect areas that stand in natural beauty. Because you can drive anywhere in the green belt and say, why is it, why is this simply being developed on it? It's a, it's a, it's an argument that people use to say no during the time, but historically there's been a lot of development creep within the green belt in the last sixty, seventy years. So I think there's loads of brownfield sites within the green belt that could be developed. But I think can these be done sustainably? Because there's an airfield in Surrey which was on the TV a few weeks ago. And it's surrounded by little country names. It's an ideal site for two thousand houses, but how do you get to it? There's no railway nearby. So I, I don't know. I think it's, it's not a simple issue to, to say that everything in the green belt could be developed if it's previously developed. Yeah, so it's tricky.
So to turn back, it says, it says draft in Dutch and incorporate a grey belt that would be land within a green belt. It defines this is glossary, and language has been previously developed, which I said. So you must be very careful with what they're actually using language that's been built upon. So I think that there's a lot, yeah. Yeah, okay. Thanks, Roger. But.
Everything is to go along.
I'm reading as I wanted, yeah. No, Roger, you'll be right there. But anyway, just stay with what I said. So I think we do need to stick to what it said.
Thank you very much.
And then what I think we need to do is, have we really been, we haven't got a green belt, whether we should just ask a question? What is, what is, will be the definition of grey belt and what it actually is. It's in here, but people are saying it's very different.
Okay, so, so can I just, Savills, the Land Management Agency, yeah. So the government, the recent proposal to amend the national planning policy framework introduced a relatively new consensus, the planning and development list, namely that of grey belt. But what exactly is it and how will it be implemented? And it says, avoiding hazardous release of the green belt for speculative house building, maintaining the purpose and general extent of the green belt, taking a more strategic approach to green belts, lands designation and release to build more homes in the right places and prioritising the release of lower quality grey belt land and introducing golden rules to ensure development benefits, communities and nature. And then they're saying that grey belt is being defined as poor quality land, car parks and wastelands, poor quality scrub land, mothballs on the outskirts of towns, a car park or similar land which does not affect the beauty of the countryside. Or a disused petrol station. So it's, it's those sorts of, yeah. There's nothing mentioned about poor quality agricultural land, farmland or anything like that.
You're now poor quality land.
No, 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 it doesn't say, it says scrub land. Poor quality scrub land, mothballs outside the outskirts of the town.
Thank you. John, sorry, big question.
Can I suggest, next business, I will see the green belt issues going to decide above our paper rate. And frankly, if the green belt policy is relaxed, that's only in our benefit, Buckingham Town, because what would happen to us before is there was a lot of housing need exported northwards from the south of the fourteen, because oh, heaven, they're going to be built on their green belt precious land. If that gets relaxed in whatever shape of form this grey belt becomes, that's only good for us. With the pressure on us as a town, it's less, I don't see the other point in having a further discussion about this. I'm moving next business.
I disagree. One thing we do need to see clarity over, taking on John's point, which you made very well. One of the things with the developmental plans before you get, that the duty to cooperate, which is a large part of the legislation, that the councils will not have the right not to cooperate. Which means when you get to areas down, in other parts of the county, we know what John said is correct. There's a duty to cooperate. London always has a right to export it out of London. So numbers get exported. So we do need to get clarity around the duty to cooperate, what that actually means. Because it could be that what John says is going to happen again, but that's one of the biggest now. So we do need to get clarity around, you know, you want to get that.
So any other comments to make at the moment? Steve's been listening, making notes. Is there, I'm happy to, well, I will recommend that members delegate votes is the response to the consultation. Second in advance, if all those in favour, thank you. You are of course free to contact Steve if you have any other thoughts.
It'll be, you're my corpse.
It's not enough house of the day for Robbington to part all his, all his thoughts.
So now we don't need to get, go back to the dedication, so. Perhaps I can suggest that pretty first of August be the last date to give me an additional comment. And then we can get it done and dust it. Thank you very much, everyone. We move on then to action reports. Catherine's leave those out too. One that jumps out is the Bondal Field entrance to the Buck. Allegedly about planning permission. Highways, I've had a site visit on there. Comment is visibility is not affected by the sign. And I've noted, there is a forty mile speed limit, it's very graphic.
I came out of there yesterday and it's not the wall and the sign that affects visibility. It's the bushes and the hedges. Yeah. That's, that's why you can't see out of there. It's, it never was a sign. There was always the bushes and the hedges.
The application is still pending, the planning application which we objected to. So that's still, that is still pending at the moment. John?
Yeah, mine is a query about seven one nine slash twenty three about the section one of the six monies that are not being spent. Have we got any mail being that?
So that was the skate park.
Yeah, the skate park and, and also I think there was money unspent from.
Yeah, the shelter, shelter being.
Carousels as well.
You're still waiting for a response, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Your free trading policy, John, is still waiting out an appointment to that. Some Silverstone, Buckingham Silverstone, Site Hawk Loop, which Fran raised, that map. We've been to Silverstone. We had a response from active travel. There's no other information in the public domain at the time. It should become available as things progress. Will be published on our website. Enforcement about the other lines in Verney Close, Mark Hill and the Dip and Fleet Yard. We've had no further response from the R A T, it was back in May. But they did say at the time, new statements or new media works must be completed as like for like. Disclose any works from our own works to utilities. But at some point, our calendar picks all that picture. Anyone else that we listed on the action list? John?
At least you can tell me if there are some, William Rowe, yeah, Bunches of State.
I've not done that yet.
All right, okay.
What about any iron stuff?
So I've got there more or less every Tuesday, all the way to London, and notice every time there's no truck.
We can get some of it moved forward.
Right, let's receive the action reports then. Buckinghamshire Council Committee Meetings. For Buckser Planning Committee, no Buckingham applications on the twenty fourth of July, fourteen of August is cancelled. Strategic Sites Committee on August first is cancelled. Growth Infrastructure and Housing Committee was held on the sixteenth of July. And the Transport, Environment and Climate Change Committee was held on the twelfth of August.
Will be, will be, will be. I mean, they've done well, if they can get a meeting done before it happens. Buckinghamshire Council, which, you know, time travel hasn't been something they've done yet. I think they perhaps will practise time travel in lots of meetings.
Right, number twelve enforcement, report any new breaches. We move on to rolling lists update. Catherine has put there a appendix Z, the tree for the applications, which we've questioned as a rolling matter. Thank you, Catherine. Matters to report, any damage to purpose, redundant signs in the town, access, instantly or other urgent matters. Actually, I was quiet tonight. There is one, I always, then, it's the parting out. Actually, it was quite annoying, there is one item, there's, um, it's the parking outside community centre. On the side of the care homes, um, we've been ticketed for parking. On the little bit at the end here, which, we've got the yellow lines, it's, there's no covering the sign.
No, it doesn't.
The sign is quite clear, but we can park there.
For one hour, yeah.
After one hour, um, two people last week approached it, one of them who I know well. Say they've got tickets for it, no feeling, because with yellow lines not backed up, so what we really need is clarity for that. Catherine, you said you'd take a photo tomorrow to show the airlines on the, on the side, saying you can park there. Um, the other question was about the unused taxi rank, or nearly unused, um. Which is behind, um, between the, 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 um, probably.
I mean, I noticed one day, last week, I walked. When it was exactly, when, when we were gate mark, then walked up from. Um, that one way, and there was lots of cars taking, out the end to. It must have been our week to have particularly come in the town. So I walked along, by what we're doing, to get a copy, there was quite a few times to get, but they must have come to town again. Um, the layby, would it be better that we, through you, chairman? Or whichever committee wrote the agenda that item, because. Have prepared, the doctor repairs still haven't been done there, and the. Slap that we're doing, and actually, um, decide to wrap the whole thing up for the future use of it, um. Want you make that it's been enforced, but, but do it as an agenda item and try and. Um, back down what it is, because Catherine's reported all these things, I know.
Yeah, my race is under signage, but it may be a matter for the town centre.
Well, we, can we allow it if it's got, come back to town centre, then come back, so we discuss it, make a comment about it wherever it's appropriate? If that's, uh.
If someone wants to write to me with a suggestion, so what they want to say.
Um, what projects, I don't think it's, I don't think.
I'll do that, yeah. Is there one, Pat, that much?
Just for clarification, is this where the parking, um. Square, white area ends, and then it says keep clear for the community centre, um.
Yeah.
Parking area to, to sweep in on, there's those almost two bays at the end, really.
The door, the street, it's a better come up across the pavement from the, from the bend, I've, I've watched in time again that. The lady who put, put a Mercedes on the, yes, community centre, she doesn't try and get in there, she comes up.
Uh, great, but that's not the, uh, approved way of getting in there, it's just easier, yeah. But it's, is that, is that, is that an area there which is under question?
Keep, keep clear has absolutely no validity in law.
Not the what?
The keep clear sign has no validity in law.
But, no, it doesn't.
No.
There's no signage on the.
On the wall or anything, no, they actually put the double yellows.
Yeah, we, we brought up on the clarification.
Yeah, 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 no, I just, uh, no, I've got it in my mind.
Be careful what you wish for, they might say.
Yeah, they might, yeah, that's what I'm worried about, yeah.
People start to get ticketed in there.
Yes.
I think, I think quite, quite possibly, it's, it's been a, um. Uh. Overzealous, um, parking enforcement officer, um, who hasn't actually realised that, um, hasn't looked at the signage. Hasn't been given the maps, so whoever's been, um, ticketed just needs really to, um. Appeal it, um, and, and get Buckinghamshire to look at it, I don't think it's something we need to get involved with. Really, on, 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 on parking, um, parking tickets, et cetera, however. Where, when they were building the care home, they were using that bay, that, that layby bit, um, to. Store a lot of equipment and, and whatever else, the, the, um. Sets in the, in the side of the road, between the bay and the road, are, are still loose, they've not, never been, um, never been properly. Refixed, so that's something to, to, um, to put on fix my straight again, um. Whether that's something that, um, that another committee needs to start writing to. Bucks Council about, but I think it's a fix my straight thing, rather than anything else.
What I was raising on the parking, there's not only that bit where it says keep through, it's also the taxi rank, it's now, it's now redundant.
But taxi superstop there, I have.
It's happening, and they're not happening, they're, 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 of course. We should do this. Don't have a bank for that. It's the red boat taxis that, that being ranked, and I don't think we have any actual taxis.
That's why I'm to the foundation.
But just because there aren't any, any, any actual taxis, it doesn't mean that we don't need to have a taxi rank.
There's two sorts of taxis.
Yeah, I know, there's many caps and there's, there's private hire vehicles and there's taxis, yeah.
Particularly the really thing, we're going to have a bus service that needs taxis, so if they've got one of their taxi drivers, pick them up there.
Yeah.
In theory, it is a taxi rank, but you can't see, once you park on it, you can't see the other lines.
How, however. To get somebody to be there is a different thing to taxis sitting there waiting to, to get the fare. Which is a different thing altogether.
Thank you, well, John?
Uh, probably, I want to like to think as far as I understand it, there's a real line that we call a. I consider are not enforceable, because there's no proper, uh, uh, road traffic, um, in, in fast food. Um, and secondly, when are the Shire Council going to implement the changes? On the parking, because setting it from seven to seven and bringing in the Sunday charge, do we have any intel on that? Do you know when they're going to be doing that?
When I questioned this matter some time back. What I was told is they completely alter the amount they charge, that's not a issue.
Yeah.
What they said in response then was to do the other change.
Yeah.
Which was the, yeah, was, was a separate area of consultation, now what would be? Question always whether the parking consultation negates that now. Or whether that's a separate form of consultation that they should have done, I, I'm not sure, I think that. They're probably considering that the consultation they did with us, which they ignored, um, um, was the consultation. I think it's worth, um. Getting clarity around that, because in the, in the response to myself and the cabinet member, which I've still got. He stated that they would be able to change the tariff, but would need that situation, so I need to go back and see what was said. Because I think, I think, so I think we're going to need to find out, I think it's a very, um.
Robert, sorry, I, I just made the point, this is not on the agenda tonight, it will be on the agenda, like, sixteen. Of September council meeting, I put a motion in about this.
Yeah.
And we can discuss it at length, as Steve just pointed out.
Okay.
Thank you for raising a good one.
Yeah.
Thank you, so anyone else, any comments on that?
Just to see clarification, I'll leave it to office to decide whether that goes on the events committee, um, because it's town centre. Because I do, I am concerned on accessibility, access, reasons, that has been like that for so long. I only take one for the trip over there, all the sets, other sets, and I think that maybe we did, that's it, we keep raising it. Um, on, on accessibility, only because it's town centre.
Everybody can fall.
You know, some people, you know.
I'll do, if everyone's agreed on, I'll write to Steve about it and he'll decide which committee to report it, thank you very much.
It's the accessibility, yeah.
There's no other method to report it, by the information I have, no, I'll date it next meeting, Monday, twenty seventh of September.
Um, we had that made, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.